Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, April 17th, 2018 meeting of the Dover Area School District Board of Directors. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. De Show?
Here.
Mr. Delater?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmick?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahouser?
Here.
Eight members are present.
Thank you. First on our agenda is our communications with our student board. So Sophie, welcome.
Good evening. We're going to start out with Dover Elementary. The past two weeks have been filled with great activities at Dover Elementary. On April 4th, the PTO sponsored a DJ for grades three through six. He gave a wonderful presentation about test-taking strategies and giving your best effort. On April 5th, grade K through three, excuse me, experienced critters small and great. Students participated in an interactive assembly with insects and small rodents. On April night, the staff put up a pep rally for students in grade three through six to prepare for the PSSAs. The students participated in minutes-to-win at games and even got to see the staff's production of a carpool karaoke. There are numerous upcoming field trips for our students. April 25th, the fifth graders are going to Gettysburg. On April 26th, grades K through two are going to the Strand. On May 3rd, the sixth graders are off to the Whittaker Center. Grade two is going to Zoo America, and our first graders will visit the Hands-On House. On May 7th, we will be hosting our science fair, art show, and beginning musician recital. Students will show off their scientific, artistic, and musical talents, and the art show will begin at 5:30. For live, several field trips have been scheduled this spring for the students. Grade three students visited the State Museum and the Capitol Building. Grade two visited Zoo America. Grade four is traveling to the York County Waste Management. Grade five will be touring the Gettysburg Battlefield on April 19th, and grade six will be visiting the Whittaker Center on May 11th. On Thursday, April 26th, students in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade from all of our elementary buildings will attend the Stage the Page Field Trip to the Appel Center for the Performing Arts to view a live production of The Velveteen Rabbit. The PTO May Fest is scheduled for Friday, May 4th, and that will be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Our Envirothon teams will be competing at the York County Envirothon Competition on May 2nd and May 8th, and the Live Fine Arts Night is scheduled for Wednesday, May 9th, and that's beginning at 6:00. For North Salem, on April 5th, the fourth grade students participated in the annual Egg Drop. Students are challenged with designing a container that will secure an egg and keep it from breaking as the containers drop from the roof of North Salem Elementary. This year, we had 53 survivors and 23 scrambled eggs. On April 6th, the North Salem PTO sponsored the fifth annual Talent Show. Many new student talents were showcased throughout the night, and everyone had an amazing time. On April 9th, North Salem Elementary held a pep rally to encourage our students to do their best on the PSSAs. North Salem Elementary will be hosting their spring concert on May 8th, beginning at 6:30, and all are welcome to attend. For Waggles Town, the month of April has brought several fun PTO events, including the Scholastic Book Fair and Family Fun Bingo Night. Waggles Town has had many fun themed days this month to help boost your spirits during the PSSAs. On Monday, April 9th, they kicked off the PSSAs with a fun, school-wide pep rally. Students especially enjoyed the family feud-style game played to review test-taking strategies. Third grade students attended a field trip to the Pennsylvania Capitol on Friday, April 13th. Students were fortunate to meet Representative Seth Grove during their visit. On Thursday, April 26th, students in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade will attend the Stage the Page Field Trip to the Appel Center for Performing Arts to view a live production of The Velveteen Rabbit. Waggles Town Elementary would like to extend a warm invitation to our spring concert and arts night on Tuesday, May 1st. Doors open at 6:00, and the concert begins at 6:30. For the intermediate school, the IS was awarded the coveted District Proud Award. The IS students are to be commended for their hard work and effort in completing the ELA, math, and science PSSAs. Soaring Eagle Luncheon, which is through PBIS, was held for the third-quarter recipients. Eighties Dress Day and Wacky Dress Day were held on April 6th and 13th for PSSA kickoff. The IS staff is busy preparing for the eighth-grade awards assembly that'll be May 24th. Sixth grade Step Up Night will be held on Monday, May 21st at 7:00, and the MS Envirothon team has been preparing for the upcoming Envirothon competition on May 11th. And lastly, for the high school, members of the resurgence team are traveling to our elementary schools to greet and high-five students as they arrive for school. Last week, they visited North Salem Elementary prior to PSSAs. In the next two weeks, we will be visiting our remaining elementary schools. The goal is to bring a smile to our littlest Eagles. The Mars Rover team completed the Battle of the Rockets this weekend in Virginia. The team, along with their teammates from Spring Grove High School, are the first high school to enter, to ever win, the Mars Rover event. Previous winners included Virginia Tech, the University of Alabama, and the University of Texas. On May 2nd, DHS will host its first annual Eagle Excellence Awards. This event is an opportunity to showcase student learning and achievement from the 2017 and '18 school year. The program will start at 7:00 in the DHS auditorium. We have a number of upcoming events. On April 28th, we will have our junior-senior prom at Outdoor Country Club. On May 9th, we will hold our FFA banquet and recognition ceremony, and on May 16th, we will hold our senior scholastic awards. Thank you.
As always, a lot of great things going on in the buildings. Do any board members have any questions or comments on anything? Okay, hearing none, thank you, Sophie. Again, you're welcome to stay or welcome to head out. Thank you. All right, Mrs. Kroom, we have presentations and celebrations tonight.
All right. Mr. Rup has invited his elementary student council to come today and do a presentation to you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and do a little presentation tonight. So toward the end of summer, I was approached by several teachers at Dover Elementary asking if we could bring back a student council and give the students an opportunity to have a voice in the school. So tonight, Mrs. Spar and Mrs. Huntsberger are here with a number of our student council kids. Also, Ms. Davis, Mrs. Davis and Mrs. Snyder, who's out on maternity leave, also were part of our student council. So with that being said, I am going to turn it over to our elementary student council, and I'm not sure which way you want them to face.
Our student advisory representatives are 12 fifth and sixth grade students. They are nominated and elected by their peers to represent their home rooms. They give up their own time during the school day to help to plan spirit days and other school events. They are incredibly helpful and very supportive of each other. They come up with a lot of really good ideas. And our focus for our presentation this evening is Dover Elementary's community involvement, our involvement in the Dover community.
One way that we help the community is by running a coin drive for the homeless.
Can I interrupt for a second? Can you guys sit and talk in the mic? If you don't, we won't be able to hear you in the recording.
One way that we help the community is by running a coin drive for the homeless. For Homelessness Awareness Week, we also wore red shirts on November 17th.
We collected non-perishable items and put them on the stage.
Dover's elementary's third-grade classes made 150 gift bags for Providence Place, which is located in Dover. About the Providence Place in Dover, PA. The Providence Place is for people who are older and are ready for retirement.
Around Christmas time, Dover Elementary's sixth-grade classes made 18 blankets for the Ronald McDonald House. What is the Ronald McDonald House? The Ronald McDonald House is a place for families to stay while they care for their children who are at the hospital. The Ronald McDonald House tries their best to keep families together. They say the last thing they want is for a child to be scared without a mom or dad. This is an image of Ronald McDonald House. It is in Oak Brook, Illinois, established in 1974, and this Ronald McDonald House is the Ronald McDonald House organization's headquarters.
Dover's music group gave the community opportunities for many activities, one being that the chorus and band allowed people to attend a free concert.
The Dover music, the Dover music, or... We have done many concerts over the years. We always do a winter and spring concert with the band and chorus. Although, over the years, we have added more things. We have added a jazz band, a concert in the evening for all parents to come to, and we have offered it to not only parents, but it is free for anyone in the community.
Fifth and first grade holiday crafts. The fifth grade created decorative pillowcases for the residents at the Providence Place. The first grade sang "We Wish You a Merry Christmas," Rudolph, Frosty the Snowman, and "All I Want for Christmas Is My Two Front Teeth" to the residents at the Providence Place. The first grade also created beaded candy canes for the residents at the Providence Place to hang on their Christmas trees.
One way our faculty is involved with the community is by our Christmas Elves program. Faculty members donate gifts to benefit Dover families during the holiday season. This year, the program impacted 25 of our students.
We have created a cartoon to show what we did for the devastation that happened in Texas this year. Hope you enjoy.
The money that we have raised is 18 chart-paper tablets, five series of chapter books, and other single books, 24 white card stocks, and 10 air fresheners.
Forty-eight three-ring binders, 1,200 three-pronged folders, three-colored cardstock, 16 12-magnet board games.
We ran a coin drive and earned thousands of profits.
Our fourth annual World Water Day Challenge was a couple of weeks ago, and it was a fifth and sixth-grade challenge to raise money, more money than other classes, to win the World Water Day trophy. And this money was donated to water.org, which would pay for wells for people who have to walk a long while to get water. And this year, we've raised over $300.
First-grade litter cleanup. This spring, Dover Elementary's first-grade class cleaned up litter at Calser Park in York. First grade also visited the York County Solid Waste Authority this spring for a field trip.
Some, or one upcoming event this year is the, is the music group's Dover Spring Concert. This, the band, choir, and jazz will be performing in this concert. There will be an after-school concert at 6:00 so that parents and anyone in the community can come. The theme of this concert will be 70s and 80s. Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Wonderful job, everybody. I think I see some future board members in that group right there.
I think I need one of those pillowcases.
Okay, next presentation will be our preliminary budget presentation as a follow-up to our last meeting. So, Mrs. Kroom and Mrs. Benko.
This isn't nearly as exciting as theirs was. I apologize.
No cartoons created or anything?
No. We'll consider that for next year. Okay, so we wanted to, after the last month of working with some of the options that we had provided in our preliminary budget, or the things that were actually included in the preliminary budget, and gaining feedback from the community and staff and the board, we wanted to circle back around where our preliminary budget stands at this point. We will be doing this presentation today, and then on Thursday, we will, the board will vote on the preliminary budget for public inspection for at least 20 days, and then in May, hopefully, we can approve, the board can approve a final budget. So if we go back to March, this was the preliminary budget overview in March. We were sitting at a $2.43 million deficit. And so what we did was we took the feedback provided by, again, the community and staff and the board and made some changes to our presentation. So the changes, a summary of the changes that we made from the preliminary budget presentation was, one of the options that was included in the budget was to eliminate or not replace the elementary music resignation that's happening for next year. However, the current budget presentation that you will see upcoming here does replace that position. So we will be still having four elementary music teachers here at the district. Out of the six teachers that we requested for class-size reduction in our March presentation, we are now back, we are now down to five, and that is through board input and also more analysis of our class sizes. Another change that you will see in, from our March presentation, we had recommended the hiring of a custodial supervisor. After this past month, we received a resignation just a few days ago, and that will allow us to replace one of those custodians that resigned with the supervisor that we need to supervise all of the buildings. And if I could have Dave Nelson talk a little bit about that, and he will give you some background information on how that will work.
Good evening. Came to you last month to talk a little bit about a custodial supervisor to help monitor and supervise the people at night. Last year, if you remember, we went down from six head custodians to five, and we used one of those head custodians as a floater. He has now resigned, so we'd like to put a supervisor in the place of that head custodian simply because the head custodian under the bargaining unit cannot really tell people what to do, so to speak. So a supervisor would be able to instruct them on what to do and how to do it better than, basically, a peer. So that's kind of our goal, is to put a custodial supervisor there to take care of some of the day-to-day training, monitoring, making sure, you know, they're doing their job right and doing it well.
Thank you. The other change from the March presentation and the feedback that we heard, we had recommended that we replace our access coordinator position here at central office. The person that was in that position took another position within central office, and we wanted to replace that position with another full-time support staff. Due to feedback, we eliminated that request, and we are, we're going to attempt to fill within. However, as we look at our structures here within the next coming month and through any feedback from the board, additional feedback from the board, we may look at including that back in. What an access coordinator does, and what that full-time position that we originally recommended does is that person bills for things like transportation through Department of Welfare, nursing services for our special-needs kids, things like that. Currently, the, with the staff that we have, we do not have enough time in the schedules to allow for this billing to happen. Therefore, we are losing out on some revenue. I think that we could absorb some of the, some of the duties within, but I don't think to incorporate the need of that position fully would be, we couldn't fully gain the revenue that we want to gain off of the access billings that we want to do. So we would definitely like any feedback on this one. Currently, it is not sitting in our preliminary budget, but if anyone has any other thoughts, if, you know, if the board could provide us with some direction, then that would be great.
Mrs. Benko, could you give us an idea as to the potential revenue we could see from the access program?
So currently, we receive about $100,000. And if I could have maybe Kathy Geyer speak to some of this. She may better know because she had supervised this position in the past. If you want to come up to the microphones. Currently, we have $100,000. I know there's other districts out there, and I'm not sure how their size relates to us, but they're bringing, you know, some may be bringing in up to $1 million for some of this funding. So if I could have you explain.
One of the things that we've done, especially since we took back our life skills and artistic support classes, we have, as you know, increased staff because of those classes. And so for every personal care assistant that we have, we actually allow that person to log. And what that does is by logging what they do with a student, we then can bill for that. So for every salary that we're paying out for that person, we're actually getting money back if we bill for that in access. So one of the things that we've done this year is we've really become very systematic as far as teaching our PCAs how to log so that we can get the most bang for our buck. So we're doing that, but it does take a great deal of time. The other thing happens, as Mrs. Benko mentioned, is also with the nursing services. That does take a great deal of time, so we have our nurses logging whenever they see our special-needs students. But we also have students who are receiving Dover services elsewhere, and therefore, we can actually get some of that money back as well if we are the ones who are providing those services. So just maintaining that and watching that at all times, keeping track of it, does take a great deal of time. The transportation is something we really haven't done much with. That's the one thing we really want to do because we know how much we're spending for transportation for students across the county is something we could definitely benefit from. But as Mrs. Benko mentioned, it wasn't something that we really had time to look into as much.
If you would have to take a guess as far as a percentage, what percentage of billable costs are we actually billing for? I mean, are we doing 100% of billable costs?
Oh, no.
Are we even close to 100%?
No, not right now, no. We're still learning, too. One of the things that they've done is every year, the system has changed. They've changed how they bill, so the person who currently doesn't now goes and does training with them every year to learn more. We actually just had our site review here by the company, PCG. They'd come and they'd said that we've done everything that we can do right now, but they also have given us some pointers and tips that we could do to actually receive more services. So we could definitely benefit from more, getting more back. We just need to really look into it.
What would we be looking at as a cost for this as a full-time position approximately?
Because, I want to say, I don't recall what it was in our last budget presentation, but because it's a full-time, 12-month position, I would say with benefits, you're looking at at least probably $50,000 to $60,000.
So even if we, we're already bringing in $100,000, so we bring in $500,000, a million, we're more than paying for the position then?
We would, yes. Now, there's, the first year of implementation, there is no way to gauge what revenue we will be able to bring in when you're starting to bill for some of those extra services. So I don't, I don't know that I would be able to budget that extra revenue the first year because we would, that person would have to go through a lot of training. And although we will have the person who used to do it train them, we want to make sure that they're trained properly because there are a lot of compliance requirements that go along with it because they are federal funds. So I don't know that I could add in the revenue the first year, but definitely moving forward after that, we would see a, I would say, a large increase in funding that we would receive.
Thank you.
What kind of time parameters do you think that position would require? Is this, is this something that would take full-time effort to bill and so it would be no time?
We would also utilize that person for some help with some central registration stuff also on, you know, some of the down months, if there are. I'm not quite sure. I know over the summer, maybe. But we would also utilize that person for those responsibilities.
Right now, looking at the person who currently does it, she spends about half of her day doing access billing and looking into other ways to get revenue. So about 50% of her schedule right now, at least, is on those things.
I could also, instead of waiting until May, I could also, if, you know, if the feedback is that the board thinks this position is important, I could also add that back in prior to Thursday's meeting to approve that access coordinator position.
If the return on hiring someone is that great of a potential, I think we would be very short-sighted not to take a serious look at that. And that's my opinion, but I would think that that would be something that we should seriously consider.
I would agree.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, we will make sure we update our budget presentation, our budget numbers for Thursday for that. Okay, so just to revisit, some of these slides may, may look a little bit repetitive from what we did last month, but I just wanted to revisit our budgeting goals and objectives. We know we're addressing large class sizes at the elementaries. We're reevaluating every single position upon resignation or retirement while also planning for staffing for future possibility of realignment of buildings. We're continuing to direct resources to educational programs and classrooms. We are evaluating and ensuring proper funding is in place for our special-needs students. We are looking at our technology and making sure that we're fostering a 21st-century learning environment. We continue our site-based budget methodology, and we start from zero. So we have a zero-based budgeting culture through those site-based budgets. We also continue to manage and control fund balance levels for our general fund and capital project fund to ensure that proper funding for the construction of the new high school is in place and renovations to the existing high school to transition to the middle school. So first, what we looked at last month was our professional staffing and class-size reduction in enrollment. This next slide will look very familiar as we are showing our enrollment for the next three years from 1718 up to 2021. The slight increase in enrollment from 35, 46 to almost 100 students, more, 36, 40. So as far as class sizes, how do these enrollment projections impact our elementary staff and our class-size policy? I'm going to have Mrs. Kroom go ahead and speak about the staffing and what we have included in our current preliminary budget.
Okay. So all of the principals and I and Dr. Maloney and Christina got together, and we really analyzed each of the buildings. We looked at every grade level, every class, and we actually put on five white, on six whiteboards every building and every teacher and every position to really get a nice gauge of our class size. We then looked at where we felt we were getting very high and in some cases where we went over class-size policy. And we ranked them in order of what we thought were the most important to fill. And just a reminder that last year in July, August, we came to you and asked you for three temporary, one-year teachers. Well, again, those class sizes are the same going into the next grade, so they are now. going into the next grade, so they are now in here as a permanent replacement. So we, we, after looking at all of our high class sizes and also looking at some other areas where we might be able to reduce a teacher or two, these are the five new positions that we are asking to replace. North Salem Elementary, last year, we put a temporary teacher in there, so that temporary teacher goes away. They were not permanently hired. So North Salem, fifth grade, with just the two teachers, we would have a class size of 38 per teacher. Second was Live, second grade. Right now, there are three teachers in there, and if we, if we stay with just three teachers, we're almost at 28 students per class. A reminder that the class size for grades K to three is 15 to 20, plus or minus five, so 25, anything above 25 is out of compliance with our class policy. So at this point, again, we're looking at, you know, close to 28 students in a second-grade class, so we're requesting a fourth teacher there. Dover Elementary similarly has a class size of almost 26 students with three teachers. We are asking for a fourth teacher in Dover for first grade. Dover Elementary, third grade, with the three teachers, is class size of 26, and we're asking for a fourth teacher. And then finally, Weiglestown Elementary, third grade, with three teachers, is almost at 25, which is the max of the class size, so we are asking for a teacher there. We are also, again, we will have some shifting of some other class sizes that are smaller. However, we're a little concerned about kindergarten. If you look back at the numbers from the last chart, our kindergarten numbers have come in a little high the last couple of years, and so we want to hold back on a teacher in case one of our kindergarten classes comes in high. Right now, I want to say our enrollment in kindergarten is at 180. Our, our average is about 250, so we're still short about 70, 80 kids. So how they come in could push one of the kindergarten or kindergarten classes over. And if you take a look at it, at Dover Elementary, last year, it was our kindergarten that was high. We also have one of them on the list that is not on this list, but it was originally is Live, which is getting close to class size. It's not on this list, but we're going to keep an eye on that as well. Any questions?
Question.
Sure.
On the kindergarten enrollment, when would we have a better understanding of where those numbers would fall in? Like, for example, what happens if maybe it comes in lower? Would it be possible to adjust?
Sure. Oh, absolutely. Yes. Yes. We had kindergarten registration last week, so those are our, our physical registration. When is kindergarten screening?
The week of May 7th.
So by May 7th, I would think we'll have a, this will kind of clear up a little more, but I think the principals will say we have kids, look, it's Tuesday, we have kids enrolling in kindergarten in July, in August. So, but I, but I think after May, we'll be getting closer. We'll be, I mean, you can always have that weird bump, so we'll be keeping an eye on any buildings that have that. Like Dick said, Dover was concerning last year. If they're getting high and we're in May, we might have a concern there. But if, again, North Salem is low and does seem to have lower kindergarten numbers right now, you're right, we could, you're right, we might not need that. We might be able to adjust there as well. So we're, we're going to keep an eye on that.
Question I have, we, we've talked in the past about restructuring or possibly restructuring our, our elementary schools. If, if we would have that restructured schools, how would that look for this? Would we be able to better absorb our, our classes between the schools that right now have lower students versus higher students?
And depending on how we would want to restructure, and the, what we're looking at right now is possibly two K to, K to two buildings and then a three to five building, two three to five buildings. Yeah, we could probably save a teacher, two or three at each of those buildings in the content area, and then we would have discussion on the specials, the encore, what do you feel you need at every building? You know, do you feel you need art at a, you do, do you need full-time art at each K two building? Maybe you, we don't want that. So, yes, I think we could save that. So as you saw those class sizes going up, I think if we're getting a handle on this now and it follows that trend, we might be solving this issue right now, with this year and possibly next year, which would be great.
Any other questions on the staffing? Okay. So this is a summary of what is included in the preliminary budget for the staff summary. So I'm going to have Trace, Mrs. Kroom also go through this slide.
So again, what we're asking is for elementary hiring of additional five teachers. And reminder that one of those teachers will be paid for through Title II funding, federal funding. We are looking at this point, and first I want to say, we still have another month, so things are clarifying and, and changing a little bit, but at this point, we're looking at the IS, not replacing the phys ed teacher, and swapping that out for an intervention specialist. We truly, at the intermediate school, have a number of students who need additional supports, a large number of students who have additional supports, and feel that this intervention specialist would be very well worth it to give support to some of these students. That would not affect the budget at all. We are also looking at the high school swapping a retiring CTE teacher for a full-time Spanish. I think we shared last month that class sizes in the CTE are a little lower right now, and Spanish is huge. We have huge numbers of students in the Spanish program, so definitely feel that the need for Spanish would be wonderful. We also, a reminder that the teacher's contract is 2.9 wage increase plus column movement, so the preliminary budget components do include that. We are currently negotiating with both the sports staff and the Act 93, so don't know where that will come in, but these will be, you know, these will be contractual increases. That will be our obligation. Currently, we have one instructional advisor in the administration, and we are recommending that we transition that person to the teaching, into a teaching contract that would be, again, no effect on the budget. And finally, the high school dean of students position will be eliminated. I want to talk a little bit about this in that at the high school, at all the other buildings but the high school, the dean of students is an intervention specialist and a dean of students, and can help with the minor discipline issues. At the high school, it's different in that, first, they're not an intervention specialist. They help out with minor discipline issues, but as a dean, they are not in a position where they can suspend students. So while they can help, help the assistant principal, they truly, really can't do discipline. One of the things that we did when we restructured the administration team two months ago is we moved one, the, the second instructional advisor into the assistant director of special education to truly help the director of special education focus on special education. You're going to see some numbers, you've seen some special education numbers. We do know, and again, we were just talking about with access, we know that we really have to put a lot of attention on there. So to do so takes a lot of the duties that the current instructional advisor has, moving them over to the assistant principal. So alt ed, which now comes under the one instructional advisor, is going to move over to Mrs. Shelley. We're already transitioning her. And that is a tremendous amount of time overseeing the alternative ed program. The other assistant principal we are recommending would be in charge of our cyber school, and at this point, we probably have six or seven full-time cyber students in our cyber school. What we would like to do is next year, really advertise our cyber school to those students who are out of, who are doing out-of-district cybers as a, as a true option. And we believe that the other assistant principal can definitely focus on that more. And also, we have added additional programs for students who struggle, and that second assistant principal would also oversee those programs. We believe that those programs, because they all involve secondary students, should be owned by the high school, because then they get the total picture of the students. So that would be swapping out the dean of students and replacing the dean of students with an additional assistant principal at the high school. Any questions about those?
I have two questions regarding that, that slide. The phys ed teacher at the intermediate school, can you share with us what the structure currently looks like there and how the revamping here, if we don't replace that position, how it would look?
How it looks. Terry, would you speak to that?
Well, currently, we have three phys ed teachers, but they actually only service two classes, a seventh grade and an eighth grade class. And wellness is part of that seventh grade and eighth grade class. So next year, what we're going to be doing as we get ready to transition to the high, well, the high school, which will be our school, is we're going to actually be setting up the seventh grade class and the eighth grade class so that they can run independently. And then thinking that when we transition over to the new building for us, we'll probably be having some specialists that are going to be coming in from the elementary level to be able to support the sixth grade as they come in. So this way, we'll be able to support our seventh and eighth grade now, be able to use that third person, which really, right now, isn't being used effectively in order to do our intervention program for our kiddos that are coming into the IS. So we'll be able to service everybody with the teachers that we currently have.
From a, from an outsider point of view, there would be perhaps a perception that physical education isn't as important. And I know in the, in the past, there's been some feedback from our community that, you know, childhood obesity and things like that were of great concern, which they are. And, and so I'm asking these questions because I'm concerned about, would our students suffer as a result of not having that position?
And actually, in our new schedule that we're working on updating, the students will actually get more phys ed time because we're increasing our periods from 41 minutes to 54 minutes. So students will actually get more phys ed time and the opportunity to have phys ed twice a year instead of just once a year. So the way that we're adjusting the schedule in order to pick up our specials, we're going on a 34-day special rotation, which will give students more opportunities in their elective subjects and the opportunity to have gym twice a year instead of just once a year. We're really packing that schedule with everything that we can get in there, every minute of every day.
Second question I had, I believe last month, we had talked about the possibility of department chairs at the intermediate school. Is that still in the presentation?
It is, yes.
It is, yes.
That is still, I think it's in an up, I think it's in an upcoming slide.
Yeah, it is in an upcoming slide.
Okay. Just curious.
Okay. Any other questions on the professional staff? So these are just some reminder slides about special education and how our services impact the district's budget. So we take a look at special education. We want to look at Dover students who are currently in both outside placement and also placed in intermediate unit operated classes. So this slide really puts a cost to all of the services that, most of the services that we have, or that we utilize outside of our, our walls. And I guess some of these, or some of the intermediate unit classes are inside our walls, but they're an IU operated class. So just, you know, just some numbers that, you know, kind of hit home for us. Our emotional support cost is approximately $1.26 million. Our dual diagnosis cost, which is a very low student count for this cost, is sitting at $146,782, and that's, that's big. Also deaf heart, a hearing at $185,000. And, and you can see the numbers here. Other related services, which some of the, the students that would be in these buckets that are in the first table, also receive these services such as OTPT or psych or speech or, you know, other nursing services. So when we take a look at all those costs, it's approximately $4.1 million for about 117 students. So we just kind of wanted to give that cost to you so you could, you know, put, put a number to the number of students that are being serviced by such a large cost.
So that, if I did my math correctly here, that's a little over $35,000 on average for those students. And then what do we typically spend on average for the other students in the district?
I'd say anywhere from $15,000 to $16,000.
Okay, so that's the difference. Thank you.
Okay. So then when we just take a look at our IU service costs and how they affect the budget, so if you see up there, we went through this slide last, during the last presentation in April, we're seeing about a $500,000 jump from what we, what our revised Schedule A is for this fiscal year 1718 to what we will need to budget for, for next year. Our original Schedule A, which is the invoices, is how we are invoiced for some of these services, came in at $3.2 million. And then when we got the revised schedule, because of changes in per ADM costs and changes in students coming and going, it was at 3.7. We only had budgeted for 3.3 because we've, we budget off of the revised schedule we receive in February. So we budgeted off of the 1617 cost of 3.1, budgeted 3.3, and now we're sitting at 3.7 for 1718. So that's $600,000 that we were not expecting to have to spend in 1718. Hopefully, I can gain those savings from other buckets that may have decreased unexpectedly. So our district budget for the IU services are at, the Schedule A IU services is at $4.1 million. And that doesn't include some of the outside services such as outpatient psych services, intensive, intensive, emotional support services at Lions Pride and Paradise. Any questions when it comes to the LIU costs? I would like to, actually, oh, I'm sorry. I would like to thank Mr. DeSho for, he's being a true advocate for us with the IU for, you know, to get some change as to how they bill us and some of, get some answers for us as to what goes into the costs that make up our per ADM. So thank you.
I was just going to ask what, in your opinion, drives these big fluctuations from what is expected? Is it student enrollment in those, or is it LIU costs per student?
It could be, it could be a variety of different things. One, it could be one student moving into our district with very high needs. It could also be other districts pulling out of the IU and the costs for those, them to operate those classes, then get spread around to all the other districts that have kids there. So it could be a variety of both. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So then I want to take a look at the components of the preliminary budget when we talk about our support confidential staff. So we talked earlier about swapping of a retiring, or I think it was resigning, I apologize, head custodian to an addition of the custodial supervisor, which won't have a budget effect. Because of the increase in teachers, we are still counting, counting on eliminating the three temporary, temporary building aids that were put in place in 1718 for class size reduction purposes. We are still including in the preliminary budget the elimination of the floating library secretary who currently visits all four elementary buildings, one and a half days per cycle. We are still looking at the restructure of the secretarial staff, including the addition of a part-time secretary at Live Elementary, and the elimination of a 10-month secretary position at the high school, whose duties will be molded into those of other secretaries at the high school. And then, again, it, our budget assumes some support staff wage increases, and we are currently in negotiations for those wage increases. Any questions on the support confidential side?
Is it possible, if you're going to take the secretary from the high school, move her over to Live?
That would be a possibility. There is bumping language in our current support contract, so we, it may not be that person. We would have to go down through the seniority list on who that might affect. And they would have to, obviously, want to accept that position.
The elimination of the floating library secretary, can you refresh our memories again, why you feel that this is feasible, and would there be any gaps there that would have to be covered by somebody else?
I, I met with the librarians about this position, and they are very concerned about the elimination of this position. One of the, one of the duties that they do are POs for the library, and under our new Skyward system, that kind of eliminates a little bit of that paperwork for, for that, for those, for those librarians. So, yes, there will be a gap. There are some things that the librarians have shared with me, or the media specialist shared with me, that they would have to pick up as their duties. And one of the things we talked about is possibly working with the principals, and maybe there's a building aide who can give them some time to help with them, but I wanted to share that with you because I did meet with them, and they are concerned about this. And they are actually asked if, if this could be put off a year, you know? I guess the person in this position is going to retire soon. So there will be, but it, but we, the principals and I think that this can be done without that library aide.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Next we move on to the administrative, administrative staff structures and budget component, components. All of these components have no effect except the assumption of the three percent wage increase. Again, one instructional advisor under the administration staff is transitioning to a professional staff role. The second instructional advisor currently under the administrative staff will just transition over to the assistant director of exceptional children. The high school dean of students position will be eliminated and replaced with an additional assistant principal, and again, the assumption of the three percent wage increase for administration. However, just want to note that the Act ninety-three agreement expires in June of two thousand and eighteen and is currently being evaluated. Any questions with the administrative staff? So this is a slide that you saw in the preliminary budget presentation last month. It just focuses on the healthcare. We're taking a funding holiday, which approx, which equals approximately five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. There is no increase in healthcare premiums for employees. We, because of good claims experience, are, are able to take the funding holiday and not pass any additional costs onto our staff. However, support staff is still being, is, will be in negotiations. So their premium rate is up for negotiations here within the next couple of months. Our piecer's rate increase of two point six four percent, and we'll cover piecer's here in a little bit. We increased the seats for York Adams Academy from fourteen to eighteen. The professional substitute rate increases to a hundred and ten dollars a day, and we are reintroducing the employee assistance program, which we have found to be very helpful through this past week with our incident at the high school. Any questions on that slide? Okay. Other preliminary budget components, and here is the inclusion of the intermediate school department heads. The full-size iPad initiative at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And some of the feedback we had received from the staff and the board to see a detailed out listing of what was included in the increase in the public communications and the social work budgets. So included in that approximately thirty thousand dollars is a residential mailing for ten thousand dollars. There's equipment for communications and public relations at forty-five hundred dollars. The software, which is Shudder Shock, and I have to apologize, I'm not quite sure what that is. I was, Brad is not here today. And then also Zoom, which is a meeting software, so we can conduct meetings, like on snow days.
On snow days.
For the administration team and things like that. And also outside, you know, if we have vendors and things that we need to connect with through the building project, we can do so through that Zoom. Also included is a K to eight social, emotional, mental health screener through Aperture Education. And I think, Tracy, you were going to speak to that?
You know, what we've been dealing with, with this, this year and with our students, the two things, the K to eight social, emotional, mental health screener and the trauma-informed care professional development for secondary are two programs that we desperately need in K to twelve. It really is a curriculum for students, but it's also assessments in which we can assess students for mental health issues, for students who might be struggling. And I think we've learned a lot this year that it is up to us in the schools to really keep an eye on the kids, and if we're seeing behavior that is out of the norm, and really looking to identify students before there is an issue, whether it's a dramatic issue or whether even it's small depression, those kinds of things. So those two pieces are extremely important that we need to put in place for our kids.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say, I'm glad to see that in there. I think it is absolutely needed, you know, especially in light of the, the incident at the high school and earlier in the year with the student at the intermediate school, that we do need things in place for our students so that they don't fall through the cracks, so that there are things in place for them, so that they know that they can go to somebody or, you know, somebody can be alerted to them ahead of time. So, and if any way we can pull in the students, I know we have that Avetum program, I'm not sure what it does throughout the school year other than the kickoff program, what, you know, other kinds of student-led programs, programs that might involve the community, parents who would be very willing to step in and help in any way they can, you know, to kind of build a, a community around our students as well. So glad to see that's in there.
Any other questions from the slide?
Just again, I know Dom had spoken a little bit about this last month. The full-size iPad, he had talked, I think, initially about the minis having the possibility of recouping some costs through that. Now is that?
That is included in the revenue section, yes, so that will be an offset of that cost.
Okay. And I guess my other question on that would be, is this something that could be phased in versus, over a year or two versus?
I'll have Dom's.
Yeah.
Can you come up to the microphone, please, Tom?
Part of the reason, taking the large step that we are, is because the mini iPads that we have now in fifth and sixth grade classrooms have a better resale value at this point rather than waiting a year. And looking at the figures, I could get, we can, we can fold the classrooms for third and fourth grade, plus fifth and sixth, selling enough of the resale value of the iPads, mini iPads. We can make up some of that, a lot more of the cost this year than next year. Because these, the value of the iPad is higher than the resale value of, say, a Chromebook. The resale value is higher, just like buying a car. Certain cars, certain trucks hold a better value. I, the Apple product holds more of a value in, by the years. But after you get to that fourth, fifth year, you lose more money on it.
Thank you.
On that same subject, another question that I have is, a few years ago, there was a discussion when we brought on the mini iPads and had the one-to-one challenge, or the one-to-one commitment there was, in time, snow days will disappear. I'm just curious, is that a reality or is that sort of a fictional pie in the sky type of mentality? I mean, this year, you know, with the whole calendar thing, is moving to a full-size iPad a, a step in that direction, if that is possible?
It theoretically, absolutely. We absolutely can move in that direction. However, PDE is so far not renewing that agreement. They're not letting us do it. So that actually ran out in November, was a pilot program for PDE. They did not re-up, re-up with it. I think they're going to, I think they could, they're going to have to, have to, but absolutely, absolutely. That is absolutely a reality, that we could do snow days. I know districts who do things just with their seniors on certain days where the seniors go home and do that. But yeah, that absolutely is a reality. We could definitely do that.
And then slightly different twist on this is, in your opinion, in the administration's opinion, how successful has the one-to-one initiative with the minis been in the educational process? Are there some that, are, are there a lot that don't get used, don't get implemented the way they should be? I mean, there's been a considerable cost to the district to implement this. This is another additional cost. Like, are we moving in the right direction here to get more people to use them? Or is it a, an underutilized resource to begin with? I guess that's the overall question that I have.
Most of that, some of that is built on curriculum and what we have in place. And we're going towards a program that the Apple Education is building on. There is a event they had in Chicago showing everyone what direction Apple's going towards education, and you'll be very impressed with it. I'm getting the version cut down some because it's over an hour long, but I'm going to try to shorten it. And at one of the board meetings, I can show that, and you can see what direction Apple's going towards education.
Now, I, I have to say, here in Dover, just from my observation of one year, I have not seen the expectations of its use with teachers. I, I can't find documents. I think the principals would agree, we've had this conversation many times. Teachers, they were given something, they were given training, and, and it was whatever they did with it. Next year, we already have a framework of expectations, this is part of it, what they will be expected to do and use. I think it would be very dangerous to back off of this now because the whole world is moving forward. We, we talked about this, if we pulled back and maybe looked at Chromebooks or something like that, the cost to start all over would be huge. So at that price, really, when you're talking about doing the entire disk for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars minus our resale money, well, yeah, with the resale money.
About a hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, so that, that is, that is not a bad price to get us moving in the right direction. And I'm concerned if we don't move in that direction, kids are not going to be prepared for not only the world but for college. You know, I, I know in grad school, I did not hand in a paper, not one, in, when I got my superintendent's letter, not one piece of paper did I ever hand in. So I think we need to prepare the kids for that future.
Do I understand correctly that there are some functionality issues too between minis versus full-size, that there's some things that they just cannot do on the mini?
Yes, all Keystone testing.
Yep.
PSSAs, you cannot do them on a mini iPad. Right now, the PSSA tests at intermediate school, we spent all, all, for two weeks, keeping these laptops up to speed to be able to do the testing. So if we're going to continue with PSSA testing, Keystone testing, the option, the full-size iPad is the best option.
Okay.
And one of the, the beauties of an iPad it brings that no other device does is the apps. You have very minimal apps for this. There are so many educational apps out there. Actually, Dr. Maloney was sharing one today where a teacher who lectures has her whole lecture here, it's up there, and she interacts with kids as she's talking. It was, we looked at the video, it's amazing. It's absolutely amazing. You don't find them on laptops, you can't find the apps on Chromebooks. That's where the iPad has just millions of apps for education.
I will try to get this event cut down somewhat and even show before the meeting, just so you can see some of the, the direction Apple's going towards education.
But this, this item by itself, I understood you right to say it's two hundred and eighty thousand, but a hundred and forty thousand of that would be recouped?
Hundred, yes, we, I have a, a guarantee of a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the two hundred and, two hundred and fifty, two thousand, two hundred and fifty mini iPads. They'll come in and pick them up, pack them up, and take them. Yep.
And I think the iPads are definitely a necessity. I like the, everything that, you know, is, that a full iPad can do that the minis can't. My concern is that when the minis were introduced, like you had mentioned, I mean, there just wasn't, there wasn't that training component for the teachers. The teachers didn't know what they were supposed to do with them. And so I would, I would just say that, that is so necessary.
Must.
And needs to happen, otherwise it's just more wasted.
We'll be in the same boat, absolutely.
Related to the technology, I know it's not in here, but I was just curious, at the elementary level, there was some, some purchase on some projection, I forget exactly what it, what it was, but there was classrooms that had the.
Tables?
Like the interactive tables and stuff.
The Apple tables?
And I know there was some talk at one point about, like, trialing them at certain classrooms and then expanding that beyond that. I was just curious, how, how has that worked out?
The, we did, we did put, one kindergarten classroom got a table two years ago. This year, we put a table in the kindergarten, for the kindergartners to use. There's four tables, one in each elementary school. The tables are, I think it was sixty-seven hundred dollars for a table. So we got them to share the table within the kindergarten classrooms. Some schools may have decided to put it in the, the instructional learning center or the library, and that's, they should share it in that room, in the library. But we're looking at something a little better than that for a change in technology. It's an interact, interactive panel that hangs on the wall, and you lower it to kid sizes. It's on a portable stand, and it's basically like the table, but it's, does a lot more. Yep.
Any other questions on this? All right, so this is where our preliminary budget sits right now. So our projected opening general fund balance as of seven one eighteen is fourteen point nine million dollars. The budget revenue, as it sits in the preliminary budget at this point, is sixty-one point five million. The expenditure budget is sixty-three point seven million, which leaves us with an ending general fund balance at two thousand and nineteen of twelve point six million dollars. This brings us to a deficit of two point two eight million dollars as it sits right now. I will add in, back into the access coordinator, so that'll take us up above two point three million. And that's where the preliminary budget will, will be unless I hear other feedback on some of these other items that are included in the preliminary budget. Okay? So we continue to, again, manage, try to manage and control our fund balance levels. We've talked about this many times in previous presentations. And so if we take a look back at our sixteen seventeen fund balances and where we ended, we had a ending fund balance at June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen for the general fund of nineteen point one million dollars, and for the capital project fund of ten point one million dollars, about twenty-nine point three million dollars. If you remember, the two point one million dollars is then, we, we transferred that, and I apologize, my dates aren't up here. This should be, this column is six thirty seventeen, six thirty eighteen, and six thirty nineteen. So if you remember, at the beginning of the year, we transferred out the two point one million dollars into capital projects. So that would take our capital project fund balance from ten point one up to twelve point two for seventeen eighteen, and take our general fund balance with the deficit that we are projecting of two point one million dollars. Our total general fund fund balance at the end of seventeen eighteen is projected to be fourteen point nine almost, leaving us available funds of twenty-seven point one million dollars. For two thousand and eighteen nineteen then, we plan on utilizing approximately one point four million dollars of our piecer's committed fund balance, and we are taking the funding holiday from our LBT of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We will also utilize some of our technology fund balance of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars because of our full-size, full-size iPad initiative, and that will, at the end of two thousand and eighteen, take our fund balance down to twelve point six million The capital project fund balance, you'll see decreases from seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen because we are transferring some of those funds over to the general fund in fiscal year eighteen nineteen to cover our first debt payment for the construction of the new high school, and I'll talk about that in a later slide. I wanted to give some information on our piecer's employer contribution rates and how that truly affects year to year. So if, this column, the total employer contribution rate is set by piecer's each year. Currently, we're sitting at, for eighteen nineteen is thirty-three point four three percent. And then what these numbers on the right here represent, the increased net piecer's cost year to year. So each year, we have our total employer contribution piece, which is our total salary costs multiplied by that total contribution rate. We also receive reimbursement from the state for approximately fif, it's about fifty-six percent that we receive back to net those piecer's cost increases from, from expenditures to revenue. So these are our increases each year that we've seen as a net cost, fifteen sixteen, six hundred and thirty thousand, and then seventeen seventeen, three eighty-nine, so on and so, so forth. So if you look at the past four years, including. on and so, so forth. So, if you look at the past four years, including 2018, '19, it's almost like a $1.7 million increase just in PISers' costs that impacts our budget each year. So, when we talk about additional revenue, we also have to, you know, it behooves us to give the board information on the effects of any additional tax increases. So, the preliminary budget at this point includes a 1.23% tax increase of .27 mils. That tax increase are, is solely being put in place to phase in millage to assist in funding our future capital projects. And it's, we're also utilizing reserve funds from the capital project fund, which I mentioned earlier, that were set aside for this purpose. So, our additional tax property revenue options, as you see, we're gaining $353,000 from the .27 mil increase. And I will utilize that later to show the effect of the building project on this year's budget. You can see, if we went up to a 2%, tax increase, we'd gain an additional $120,000 approximately in revenue that we could put towards our general fund operating budget. If you went up to the index of 3.2%, we'd gain approximately $560,000 in additional revenue to put to our general fund operating budget. So, the average bill increase of what is included in the preliminary budget at this point is approximately $32 per household. Any questions on that slide?
Can we, may possibly back up to the general fund? I had a question on that, just to clarify something in my, in my mind. Yeah.
Okay.
Right now, in the current year that we're in, we had a projected shortfall of a little over $2 million, wasn't it?
Correct.
But this, this information is basically current information, correct? This is what's currently in there as of, as of now, which, you know.
This is what is, the middle column is what is projected at 6/30/18, and really and truly, it was what was budgeted.
Okay, so, if we end up falling exactly where we thought we would with a $2 million deficit, that's not to say that we can take $2 million out of the general fund there to balance that budget. Like, some of those shortfalls would be happening along the way as we get to the end of the year. It's not to say that from where that is right now...
This is at the end of the fiscal year. This is 6/30/18. That's our projected at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, where, where are we currently at then, as far as general fund?
I would, I would have to run those numbers for you. So, I mean, we have, most of our expenditures have happened, and the rest of them are encumbered because we have contractual obligations. So, they're, they're already encumbered. I think this is where we would fall at the end of the fiscal year. There's nothing I can do to back those expenditures off. We've already expended the funds that we thought we'd expend. And the ones that we didn't, they're going to saving, or to additional costs for special ed.
Okay.
Is that, answer your question?
I'm just, I'm trying to-
I don't think, I mean, current, right now, as of April, or, you know, April 17th, I don't think it would behoove us to say, oh, we still haven't spent, I don't know, $20 million or $10 million of our current budget. We still have to spend those funds by year end. I mean, they're contractual increase, contractual obligations that we have.
Well, my, my question really is geared around the fact that there's a lot of unknowns that are out there. And just like we've shared before, in the last six years, we projected a lot of shortfalls that never materialized. And so, you know, when you're trying to determine where, where to land on taxes, you're trying to take all that into consideration and figure out what makes the most sense, and where's our fund balance going to be, because some of the fund balance is already earmarked towards the project at the high school and potentially, you know, with the intermediate school, the current high school transformation to the middle school. So,
Right.
Just trying to figure out what, what we have available to us and what will we have at the end of this year. It's like, is that a realistic number? Are we going to have to spend $2 million?
For our projections, that is a realistic number.
And I, and I think our special ed costs are so significantly higher this year, we can put our finger on them. It's every day. It's every day we're making decisions about what we need to do with kids. So, and I think, Jen, would you say that is different this year than maybe in previous years?
Yeah, I mean, I can't say at the end of the year, I'm going to be incorrect. We have accruals that come in that, you know, are based off of other things that I can't control. But at this point today, this is what we're saying, we're going to have a deficit of $2.1 million. I mean, our, our balance at LBT could go up, based on the next three months in claims. I don't know that. I can't, you know, I can't project that out. I could only work with the information that I have currently on hand. That's telling us a $2.1 million deficit.
And Jen, in previous years, haven't we received plan con money we didn't expect?
Last year, we received a significant amount of plan con money we did not, not expect to receive. Any other questions? Okay, so, we're good with that slide, that slide? Any questions? Okay, so, this just puts into perspective where we would fall. The preliminary budget would put us still in the lower, lower portion of York County as, when it comes to millage, millage rates. That's assuming no other districts increase taxes for this year. I find that, I think maybe one or two probably will, maybe in this lower half. So, I think we would stay stable with where we are approximately with York County. However, something to consider there, even though we are down there, some of these other districts have varying demographics than we have. They have more, you know, businesses that keep their millage rates for their residents lower. They may be larger districts and so on. So, just because our millage rate falls down in that area doesn't mean we have the same circumstances as some of the other districts. So, when we look at the high school capital project and its impact on the general fund operating budget, currently, within the preliminary budget is our tax increase of .27 mils, which equates to $353,000. We are planning on a transfer from capital projects to fund the rest of that first debt payment service, or debt service payment, sorry, for 2018, '19. And that transfer is approximately $1 million. So, no monies are being, no new money is being funded in locally from, for our general operating budget. So, whether the, if, if the building project would not be in the discussions here, we would still be sitting at a $2.2 million, almost $2.3 million deficit for next year. Does anyone have any questions on that slide? We wanted to make sure that we kind of separated out our operating budget versus the impact that the capital project has on it. Whether we did that capital project or not, if we didn't increase taxes, we'd still be sitting at the $2.3 million. I go back to, this is the same slide as you saw earlier with the $2.3 million deficit. Again, we'll add in that access coordinator. Next steps, we'll continue to monitor our budget and make adjustments as necessary to, as to new information we get. Along the way, within the next coming months, I start to get insurance rates, so I can make sure that we solidify some of the costs there that we may have put into the budget. Also, some professional services, the costs on those. Hopefully, some better ideas as far as where state funding is going to go. Currently, the special education numbers that are projected that are out there, even for this 2017, '18 year, are not correct. They do not have the proper demographic information in them. So, I'm not quite sure when we will receive accurate information for that. The board can continue to provide us additional direction, and we continue to take input from staff and administrators onto, you know, other options that we may have to reduce the deficit. And the preliminary budget will be on the April 19th agenda for approval to release for our public inspection. And again, we'll be, you know, still reviewing that. We can make changes up until the final budget adoption in May. Does anyone have any questions?
What are, what are you looking for as far as direction from the board on these things, like the tax piece of it, or, or others before Thursday night? Or, I mean, are we going to discuss that here, or discuss-
I mean, if the board as a whole has any changes to what I had presented tonight, I would hope we would discuss those now. And, you know, give us feedback on an additional, you know, if there is the need for, you know, if you guys have, want to raise taxes additionally, I would definitely, you know, take that and change our preliminary budget numbers. So, this is meant to have discussion amongst you to be able to give us the feedback that we need to move forward with the preliminary budget and then ultimately the final budget in May.
With that in mind, I do have a couple of things I would like to share. A little curious about the library secretary's position, if there truly is a lot of concern amongst our librarians right now, and there is someone that is in a position that in another year will potentially retire, $36,000 cost, savings. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think maybe that's a topic of conversation. We should discuss whether it's the right time to make that happen right now.
Do any of the building administrators want to give their input on how they might absorb those duties into their current staff?
Apparently not.
I think what Tracy said earlier-
Can you get the microphone, please?
Yeah, you have to get the microphone.
No, I don't have anything to say.
That's right.
I think what Tracy said earlier, with the movement to Skyward and the purchase orders through Skyward, it truly has limited the burden on the library secretary. And absorbing that role into the librarian or the media specialist that we have currently, it would not be much of a task. Also, currently, our media specialists are teaching in the library three days out of the six-day cycle. Now, the other three days, they're working in the computer labs with kids, but they also have the little bit additional time that they can absorb the role of the library secretary. She is only in our buildings one and a half days out of the six-day cycle.
And so, am I to understand that the librarians themselves expressed concern that they would not be able to do their jobs adequately without that floating secretary?
I would, I'll speak out. I, I think with that much concern, I'd be uncomfortable eliminating that position. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but in light of a potential retirement in a year, it's $30, $36,000, if I remember correctly, of what the potential cost savings would be. I think that would perhaps be a wrong direction, but that's my opinion.
Another thing to consider, and I can add if that, and it's not a problem, it's the board decisions to make. Because we're eliminating that position does not mean that person will not have a position here in the district. We would have to follow the bumping language as documented in the contract. So, whether that person could take another secretarial role or something, I don't know.
Can you explain that? Because I think that the high school is faced with that same situation with the secretaries, with one, with it being proposed to cut one position. Can you explain the whole bumping procedure? So, if we, if we eliminate both positions, then you're saying one of those people might have the potential?
Let's let Christina, yeah, she can answer all those questions for you.
So, how we've handled it in the past is we have a seniority list. And what we would do is, for example, the library secretary, we would look down through, and she would have the ability to bump anyone below her, as long as she qualifies for that position. So, we would look at the qualify, the qualifications of the position. We would see if it matches, but she would have the right then to bump anyone below her. Normally, we go to the least senior person on that secretary list and kind of work our way up, along with the high school secretary, that person too, whoever that becomes the position that we're eliminating. We would look, go down through the seniority list. We did that last year with some of the building aides and-
Library secretary at the intermediate school.
Library secretary at the intermediate school. So, we have done it in the past. So, I think when you're evaluating this, you have to evaluate whether we have a need for the position. Like, Steve, you keep bringing, you know, we have to decide, do we have a need for the position? You kind of have to take the people out of it, because we could, it, it may not actually even affect them. They could move into another role. If we add in the access secretary position, that's a role someone could bump into.
But there's also the potential that those people would be bumped and they wouldn't qualify for something else, and then they would not have a position. And if we're talking about bumping two but gaining one with access, there's still one.
That's what we'd have to take a look at, and to see if they have the qualifications and the skills to meet those positions.
It's really hard to take the person out of it.
I know.
Because I feel both ways. I, I feel both ways about the retirements. I understand there's one at the high school as well retiring, and it's very hard to take the person out of it. You know, is it worth waiting in the year? Is it really a position that's needed? I mean, there's, there's both sides of it.
Even that, that aside, I'm gathering that their concern was being able to handle the workload that they have. And so, even if you do take the person out of it, there's still valid concern there whether or not they can cover it. And so-
What about, I don't know specifically what their duties are. What would be the possibility of having student helpers if it is a secretarial position, maybe having the, you know, somebody in, that wants a leadership role, you know, having the kids get that hands-on experience, I think would be great, no matter where, you know, what building, however you would want to do it, I think.
So, we have talked about, for the library secretary in particular, we have talked about, one, volunteers. But, two, I've been working with Mrs. Strasbal on how we can potentially use some of the life skill students as work opportunities. One of the things we really want to grow in the next year, or two, is our ability to provide our life skill students and our learning support students with experiences in the district to give them the skills so that they have the skills for when they graduate. And actually, we were naming a number of different places, and one of the places she brought up was, and I would agree with her, is the library. How can we get them involved to give them some, you know, computer skills, get them some, you know, skills of coming to a same job every day type of thing. So, we have other opportunities that, that potentially could help fill it. You know, we're working towards that for next year. So, we have started thinking through some of that. If the board's decision would be to eliminate the, particularly the library secretary position, what are some other options we could do to help support the media specialists so that they can still be successful?
And at the high school, so what, how many secretaries do we have there currently?
Okay, hold on. Now you're asking. I didn't have him in front of me. Go ahead.
Five, five full-time.
Okay.
Jerry, would you like to come up to the microphone?
Five, four?
That microphone here was wonderful.
I know.
We have four 10-month and one 12-month?
Correct, so-
And so, what's the rationale then behind why, why the need to cut one? And is it the, one of the 10 months or the total?
Correct. So, we have one 12-month, and we have two 10-month in the office. Then we have a 10-month secretary who technically serves as, and Mr. Benton, Christopher Rome, Career Center aide, is the official title in CTE. And then, we have a 10-month who serves as our counseling office secretary. In addition to a part-time secretary, we have actually an athletics that serves the athletic department by itself. The reality is that as we streamline jobs closer and closer, we are looking at the new high school. And as we looked at that design and that structure of the office, we actually placed things where we said, where do we need people? As we've moved forward, in that conversation, we've looked more and more at what duties can be absorbed, because we're actually double-dipping in some sorts. Not a lot, but there are places where we were double-dipping. We're doing things across- the line more than once, or more than one person is sharing responsibility, where we could condense and still cover those positions. When we were contacted and said, because we've been asked to go through and talk about what each of those positions entails, there are places where we can shift responsibility within that pool, which I believe is another aspect of that contract requirement. So our ability to shift some of those responsibilities, we can do, we believe, with minimal impact. It's not that having the extra person doesn't make things simpler on doing the task, but can we still do it effectively with the difference in number? Yes. And I'll speak about the library piece too, because what you said is important. Just know at the high school, that's what we've already started. When we, because we were part of that intermediate school reduction, we actually have students on senior release who volunteer to stay in our library space because our librarian is teaching all the time. She, now granted, our students are also a little more mature than an elementary student, so they need a little less supervision, but we have students voluntarily staying in that space and coming in during flex and serving that role. And it's been really wonderful to watch some students who didn't have a place in the building, that's become their place. They are really responsible for that 30 minutes every day and what they're doing. So that piece there, that's how we've absorbed some of those as well. We've found places where we have students who have an opportunity to reach out and serve in that capacity.
Regarding the topic we didn't talk about, the CTE versus the Spanish teacher, I know you said last month about the, the need for, for the Spanish teacher, which I understand, but I'm curious, again, eliminating a position with CTE, how that would affect the remaining teachers there? And, you know, just...
Chuck's hiding in the back.
Trying to weigh all these things out.
So we act, we've actually spent the last, and Chuck's going to make his way up here. We've actually spent probably the last, besides last week's end of week where we were dedicated to one task, we've spent a lot of time in the past week or so really looking at CT numbers. One thing that Mr. Benton did is he sat down with his department chair and they put together their draft schedule based on staffing. One of the plus sides, that's the huge plus side with CTE, is having students' opportunity to take programs that otherwise they had to leave us. They're still Dover students. The downside is that as you expand more and more, as they've had to grow their programs, we start to get smaller classes where we have some students where enrollments are only three, four, or five. And at some point, we can't offer combination classes anymore of 25 kids where there's five courses in the room because you can't teach students when you're teaching five separate classes. So one thing Mr. Benton did with his department chair is they sat down and looked at some of those courses initially that they were able to reduce down. They looked at their completer students, if I'm wrong, go ahead and smack me. But they, they reduced down some of the places where their non-completer programs or the course is not a part of that program. They also look at their space. And that's one thing that with the current structure that we battle, could we use some of the CTE credits that we are giving up for Spanish? Absolutely. However, we don't have a room where those courses we would need. I can't teach woodshop in a classroom. And right now, what we need is woodshop. Right now, what we need are places where we don't have an instructor who has the space to do what we need. Now, in the new building, we have an extra lab, that would make a world of difference. But what we have currently, we can't. And if I weren't to have that Spanish position, that CTE position impacts roughly 50 students on their schedule. If I get rid of the Spanish position, we're talking over 200 students on a schedule. So 20% of our kids are impacted versus roughly 5 to 10%.
I just wanted to make a comment on, I'm going to go back to the, to the media specialist. And I know this isn't going to be a popular opinion here, but, you know, I have to put on my, my, my private sector hat for a minute as an private sector employee. If my boss comes to me and say, you know, we're eliminating a position, you're going to need to take on more responsibility, I, I, I don't, I don't have a say in whether or not I do that. And while I value our staff's opinion, and I really do, and I really want to hear what they have to say, sometimes I think we make, need to make a decision, say, you know, from, from a fiscal standpoint, especially being a, a public entity, we need, really need to be, make sure that we're, we're using that, that money the wisest way we can. And I think we also need to look at our, our administration, and we need to take, we need to respect them and we need to, to value their, their opinion. And if they say that we can handle this, then I think we need to put some stock in, in our administrators to, to believe that. So, and like I said, while, while I don't want to discredit and take away the, the concerns of our staff, I, I think sometimes we just need to, to say, you know, we, we got to do what we got to do. So, I just, that's my, that's my...
Well, my rebuttal is, you know, we're, we're all here serving the kids, and I don't think we do these big decisions justice if we don't ask the questions, how's this going to affect the kids? And I think it's important for us to hear from all sides the perception of how it's going to affect the kids. I mean, it's, it's, I agree that it's important for the administration to set the tone and, and give the input, but I think it's also important for us to listen to the, to those in the trenches and how it's going to really affect them, be able to do their jobs. I think it's part of taking the whole picture in mind before you make a decision. So I'm not, I'm not trying to undermine anybody here by asking these questions and asking for input from those that are the closest to the situation, but that's, that's the reason why I'm asking these questions, because every one of these potential cuts could impact the kids. And so I need to, you know, rationalize that in my mind before I make a vote.
And I'm just going to speak from the administrator's side because Chuck's sitting next to me. You know, what we have to do as administrators and the decisions are not easy. You know, just the same as you guys are discussing up here, the concept of we have to take the person out, but you can't take a person out of it, we sit in the same place because they're our staff and they're our family. And when we look at what we're doing for our kids every day, to say that the decisions we're making, for example, I can only speak to the one Mr. Benton and I've been working on, he and I have spent more quality time together probably in the last week debating CTE programs, enrollment, courses that can mesh, what teachers can cover, and how it best serves every kid we can to minimize how many kids don't get that opportunity. And I think that's the case in every single administrative decision that you see from us that we brought forward in the last month. The conversations, just as you guys are having, are happening tenfold behind the scenes between every administrator in this room and every district employee. If I can say one thing about last week, the district staff supporting our school on Friday and Thursday was incredible. And that speaks to the volumes at which this administrative team is currently working. And I can honestly say in my three years, this is the first budget that I feel like I had a say in what works for our kids in every conversation we heard. As an administrative team, started with what's best for students, and it wasn't about bottom lines. And I think that's a really important point for us as we come to you to share.
Regarding the tax implication, thanks, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Regarding the tax potential, what, there's a lot of different options there for us to discuss and, and determine. I don't know how this is going to be presented on Thursday night. Is that part of, part of it? Do we have to come to some sort of a consensus to put into the budget that we...
The feedback that I heard from, from the board over the past month was, the majority was in favor of only raising taxes to the .27 mils. So that's what we were including in the preliminary budget.
This is where it gets extremely difficult as a board member. You know, we're paid the big bucks to make incredibly important decisions here and difficult decisions. And, and I'm hearing Mr. Cook, and I'm hearing Mr. Delauter, and I'm hearing Mr. Wassler and Mr. Benton and others. And you have to play devil's advocate in this. You know, you look at $37,000 for the library secretary, $51,000 for the high school secretary, and then adding in the access coordinator position again, we're putting $140,000 back onto the end of this number then, onto this deficit. So at some point, how do we pay for that extra $140,000? We, we can't keep dipping into the well. At some point, we have to be a little more realistic in our tax considerations. Do I want to raise taxes? Of course not, because my bill goes up just along with everybody else's. But at some point, we have to be realistic. We haven't done this for three years now. There's not too many districts that can say that. So I think we, as a, as a board, have to be a little more realistic in our thinking when it comes to the tax revenue, because even raising it to the index still doesn't cover the deficit. We're still having to dip into the savings account to cover things. So to go just the 27 mil, .27 mil to cover the building project itself, as Jen pointed out on the one slide, that really has no impact when it comes to our general operating fund, just the day-to-day expenses of running this district. You know, we have a, what is it, 2.9% professional staff increase every year?
Yeah, it's a 2.9% increase every year, plus any column movement that would happen every other year for, for the staff.
So at some point, the money has to come to cover those costs. Those costs keep going up, but we're not changing the revenue stream at all. So I just think we have to take a long, hard look at that chart on slide, what is it, 22, I think, and say, what could be a little more realistic or tolerable, you know, for us at some point? Like I said, I, I don't want to do it myself, but at some point, reality hits, and we have to be realistic in our thinking.
I'll make a, an assessment or evaluation from my perspective as well on that. I know I've been pretty outspoken about, about, you know, whether or not we should raise taxes and whether or not we've had deficits in the past and that sort of thing. But when I came on this board, there was a lot of mentality that we've got deficits, we've got deficits, we're, we're failing, we're, we're going bankrupt, we're going to be bankrupt by 2018, we're going to be bankrupt. We're now in 2018, and in all those projections of shortfalls, there's been absolutely none to this point. There has been surpluses every one of the last four to five years. And I would hate to put us in a position where we use up all our fund balances to, and then have to raise taxes an incredible amount, you know, and not have some sort of foresight to, to, you know, raise it along the way. But with that having been said, our fund balance still is pretty high. And we just approved the, the pursuit of a building project informing the public of, you know, a minimal tax increase that they can expect to cover that. And so I would be in favor of following through on our commitment to that and, and keeping it to .27. But I don't feel that, until we actually have a, a year where we don't meet our budget, that we can in good faith raise taxes. Because if we do, this will just be one more year in the, the string, and I don't think that's the proper way to operate. So although I don't want to see us go bankrupt, I would not be in favor of raising taxes beyond what we've already committed to. So that's my two cents.
I think what we need to remember in that is with some of those surplus years, we had unexpected revenues, correct?
Yes.
Mrs. Benko, with, you know, the plan com money, stuff like that.
I think, and I would like to add to that, there were many years, and it still continues to happen, where we don't know what our state revenues are going to be coming in because, you know, we don't, we don't have a state budget. The projections that are out there from the state, especially for special ed, are not accurate. So we continue to budget, I continue to budget this year on the 17, 18 numbers that I think we're going to get. There were some years in there too where we had a budget impasse, there was no way of knowing what we were going to get. Governor Wolf has been extremely... Nice in, in increasing the education funding to a level back to where it was before the budget cuts hit many years ago. I don't know that that might continue down the road, there, there's no way of us knowing. So when I'm budgeting revenues, it's very hard for me to say that, yeah, we're going to have a $200,000 increase in revenue, when I, I really don't know. So I have to be conservative on that point. I think there was a lot of, prior, prior to me formulating budget, they were very conservative. And, and it is what led to some of the surpluses. However, again, I, I know that position of, well, we just don't know what's going to happen. So that's, that's my case for...
And I, I don't mean to imply that you haven't done a good job or anything like that.
Oh, no, no, and I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the case. And, and like, it's just like last year, we didn't know we were going to get those plan com funds or not. I didn't budget for them because we, no one knew. And it's the same with state revenue every single year.
It's an incredibly difficult process to, to plan that far in advance and know what you're getting into and what can be expected with a, a revenue, a partial revenue stream that can't even pass a budget on time on its own. So that's kind of where you're at. I understand that. My concern is, until we actually have a deficit that pans out that way and we actually have to start using some of the general fund budget that we had in reserve, does it make sense to raise taxes until we get to that point? Or, like some other districts have done, should we look at asking everyone to do a 5% cutback on their expenses, their discretionary expenses? Is that an alternative to raising taxes or something along that line?
We have actually, this year, we decreased the allocations that went out to the buildings. In prior years, we had given them an allocation based on their testing scores and/or school performance profile, I think, and we did not do that this year. We gave them a straight, the same per student allocation without that additional supplemental money.
And, and I want to remind you, that kind of 5% cut directly affects the kids. You are directly affecting supplies and curriculum materials. You're not affecting salaries, you're not affecting PERS, you're not affecting, all of those things we can affect, that directly affects the kids.
And I think too, I want to remind everyone that we do, even though we give the buildings an allocation, we start at zero. For every single line item in this budget, we started at zero. So I, I don't, I don't even know if there's room, to be honest, except for some of these other additional things that we stuck in. I don't know that there would be a 5% room. Our budget only grew by 2.1% to begin with.
One comment on the budget is that we'll know more till Thursday because I think we're going to get a five-year plan as to what the best projections are. One of the first years I was on the board, Seth Grove got us, I don't know, it was a half million or three quarters of a million dollars more than we were expecting. We were one of 20 schools in the state that received extra money. And that year, it wasn't a whole lot left over. We wouldn't have got that big surplus. But my feeling is we have a better understanding when we have how things look for the next five years as to what direction we're going to go.
And I think I provided you a five-year projection in January. I provided that to the board members. It has changed slightly because in that five-year projection, I was projecting a 2.5% increase in taxes for, for this upcoming year. And obviously, with what is in the preliminary budget right now, it's a 1.23. So, and then also based on some of the contractual obligations, it's changed a little bit. Comments, questions? Any other changes for Thursday's preliminary budget to go on for board approval?
Okay. Love hearing that.
So Jen, could you, then what are you, what are you changing for Thursday?
For Thursday at this point, unless we talk about, unless the board gives direction to add back in either the library secretary or the 10-month secretary at the high school, then I am adding the access coordinator back in, and that will be the only change to the budget at this point.
Could you add additional revenue based on the addition of that access coordinator? Just a, an insignificant amount, but at least something revenue-wise? Because if we're already bringing in $100,000 or bringing in somebody full-time, we should at least see $150,000 or $200,000 in that first year, I would hope.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we can double it within the first year, again, because, you know, we're going to use that position also as, to support some other, other people. I, I think we can probably definitely do a $30,000 to $50,000 projection and really push. I mean, we, we can really push to get some of those funds. Kathy, would you feel comfortable with that? 30 to 50?
Yeah.
Let's do that. Okay. We will move on to our first public comment period. This is for items on or off of tonight's agenda. If you have anything you'd like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Maybe? Nobody is moving, so we'll move on to board president's communication. We did have an executive session that began at 5 o'clock today, prior to this meeting, to go over some personnel matters and some updates on some of the property issues we have, as well as Washington Township situation.
Can you hold for a minute?
Sure.
Please.
Need to catch up.
Can we briefly meet for an executive session, discuss some personnel matters?
Sure. We'll take a brief executive session. Okay. We'll move on now to item six, the approval of the minutes. I do have one thing to note on that. We do have an item that is missing from the minutes that are attached to tonight's agenda, and that was last month's budget presentation. So I would, at this point, like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 22, 2018 board meeting with the inclusion of a notation related to the proposed budget presentation.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko? We'll move on to item seven, consent agenda. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussions related to any of these items?
Just a question on the Advantage Driving School contract. Is that something new, or is that something that we've, is this a continuation?
We've used them for a while.
Correct. I had, never saw that come up before, I just didn't know if that was something new or not.
No.
Okay.
Wanted to make a comment about the retirements that are there. The four retirees represent 88 years' worth of service to the district, so congratulations to those poor individuals. Thank you for your service.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Okay, moving on, curriculum and professional development. Is there anything there, Mr. Delauter, tonight that you'd like to add?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Human and fiscal resources. We do have one item to approve in here, and that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve salary adjustments.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I believe Mrs. Christina... Blanking out on your last name, I'm sorry at this point in the day.
It's okay.
Jacoby is going to share some information with us.
Okay. There are three positions that we have asked the board to take a look at for salary adjustments. It includes our school social worker, a director of information and technology, and it's our director of child accounting and public relations. And the reason we have, I have looked at these positions from a compensation analysis, some of it's because they were newer positions to our district, there's been some changes to job duties, increase in job duties. And anytime you look at those kind of factors, you need to take a look at where they're at along with the salary. The other thing I took a look at is where we fall externally in York County. So these type of positions that are in other school districts, how do we fall? And where do, you know, where do our salaries currently land? When I did that, I realized how these three positions out of all of our administration positions are grossly underpaid. We fall at the very bottom in every single district, and therefore, from looking at that, and when I say we fall, we're probably a good $10,000, $15,000 underneath each of those positions. All three of those positions are vital to our administration team. They provide the after-hour services, whether it be network services on a Sunday or a weekend that goes down. Our school social worker is a new position in our district, and with our two incidents that we had this year, she has proven the number of hours that she spends with the families in need. And it's not just during the school day, it's often the evenings and the weekends to make sure they have support during their time of tragedy. And then our director of child accounting and public relations, so it's often the one responding to different things. As we know, the news doesn't stop on a Friday, it goes all weekend long and in the evenings. And in addition to, we've added almost a whole nother job. In a lot of districts, the director of child accounting is a very separate position from public relations. So we've chosen as a district because we have the right candidate to combine them, so we needed to evaluate their positions. So we have put together a salary memo for the board to consider that kind of lists everything that I talked about with adjustments by each person, so that we can better align their salary to their job duties that they're doing, but also to better align us to other districts. Is there any questions or anything I didn't cover?
Okay, board members, any other questions or discussions? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko. I will abstain from this vote because it does impact a family member. Okay, moving on to the capital improvement steering committee. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Plan Con Part F, the construction documents per enclosure and authorized Crabtree, Warball, and Associates, and the administration to submit plans and specifications to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for approval.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Mrs. Mealy, we're waiting on your vote.
I don't have anything on my screen, I'm waiting for my options to pop up.
That's interesting. Okay, would you like me to vote for you?
Sure, pick a, pick a vote.
Yes or no?
Yes. Yeah, I think my computer's actually frozen, dumb.
And the motion carries. I'd like to thank Mr. Cousins, sitting through all of this, for no questions, no discussion. All right, moving on to the Eagle Foundation. I do not have anything to report. Don't have anything to report at this time on the Eagle Foundation. Did you have anything to add?
Just that Mrs. Benko and I are scheduled to meet with the two representatives next week to discuss the future.
York Adams Academy, Mr. Amig?
Yeah, our meeting for April will not take place due to the school director's dinner on April the 24th.
York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter?
I do. As you all should be aware, back last summer, some point, you voted on approval of a bond issuance for York Tech to construct a new gymnasium for the school. And the bond was issued for $12 million, with $9 million to be used for the construction of the school, or, sorry, for the gym, and $3 million was going to be used for some capital improvement projects around the school. Around October, if you're aware of that area, the area around York Tech is being built up dramatically, to the point where right now, there's only one plot of ground that is still not developed in the area around the school. In October, there was a public hearing, zoning hearing, in York Township to change that zoning to a high, from agricultural to a high residential, high-density residential. That would have put a, basically, a townhome community right up against the side of the school. The school went to the zoning board and voiced their opposition to that, to that rezoning, at which time, the zoning board denied the rezoning. The township then approached the school and wanted to know if we were interested, the school was interested in purchasing that property. And like I said, the big issue that the school district had was, again, being landlocked. And then if this land was being developed, then, you know, we'd have the issue with the residents right beside the building, plus the fact that we'd have nowhere to expand. There's also some concerns with the gymnasium, which a couple of us had raised our concerns for them, and were told that it wasn't an issue. But we're building a, I think it's a 20,000-square-foot gymnasium that is currently a grass area, and some of us questioned where that runoff would go if we're going to basically put a building where ground used to be, and they told us we didn't need any more stormwater. Lo and behold, after looking, now we do need stormwater, and we don't have anywhere to put it. So we approached the property owners, who were an elderly couple, and through negotiation, we were able to purchase 59 acres of farmland. The original price was $3.9 million, but through some negotiation, we were able to get that down to 1.85 million. The idea is to use that 3 mil, was to use that $3 million that was going to be used for capital improvements, not to purchase the land. Since that time, when he started negotiations, that $9 million gym is now, was now up to 10.1, and then even unbeknownst to me, since my last meeting, and I just received it in my notes, that now, they have no idea how much this school building is going to cost. It's anywhere between $9 and $12 million. The board, or the authority board and the JOC both approved the purchase of the land. Now it is required by you guys to do a final approval on the land. It's, all school board members, all 126 board members of the 14 districts have to vote, and it has to pass by a majority of all board members. I will tell you that I initially approved this, this purchase with the understanding that it was going to fall within that $12 million, in conjunction with the gym construction. I do have concerns now, coming back with, this gym may cost us $12 million, may take up that entire bond. Some of the ideas that they have with this is, we're only interested basically in the 30 acres beside us. The 60 acres is divided into two parcels, we have two 30-acre parcels. So one of the things that they were talking about is if, if we get above that $12 million, they'd like to possibly look at, or selling the, the other 30 acres of land, and they figure they can probably get about a million, million and a half for that land. So the idea for you is, you need to decide whether or not you feel it's a good option to purchase this land for VOTEC. And again, the idea here is for, number one, so they're not landlocked. Number two, gives them some room for expansion, and I think, in my personal opinion, I think it's going to be a way for us to utilize that area for our stormwater management area. So that's where we're at. So I do have some concerns, again, with the, with the seemingly the, the continual increase of the cost of the gymnasium project. I think that's pretty much in a nutshell, unless you want me to go keep going.
A question on that. If, if the sale of the land and the cost of the building of the gym incurs that much of the bond, where's the money going to come from to develop the stormwater runoff, the retention ponds, and all that kind of thing that...
That's where that additional money is for the, for the gymnasium. So that, so that 10 million, 10.1 is including all the stormwater management.
Oh.
So, but again, like I said, it was initially started out as 9 million, and then when we got the schematics and we voted on it, it was at 10.1. And in the notes that I just got for tonight's meeting, they're now saying it's anywhere between 9 and 12.
Have they gotten bids yet or anything like that to even make that kind of a determination?
No, this is all from the architect. And again, this is from a personal perspective, these are some issues that I've had with the entire project is, you know, we've taken three years, and granted, we're building a school, I wanted to build a school, they only wanted to build a gym, but we only started talking about this in August, and...
What firm designed it?
I don't know the name of the firm, they're from Lancaster. I don't remember all the time ahead.
I just want to add to this discussion. The email that we received said that in order to have settlement on time, they would need the votes back no later than May 15th, is that right?
I believe, it's sometime in there, I don't remember the exact...
So we would have to take action on this either tonight or Thursday?
Well, what will happen is, and maybe you know a little different, I was told that it's going to be an individual, each board member will be given an individual ballot sent to them personally, and then they have, would have to vote individually on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if our board would feel comfortable with that. But then the, their hope is to have settlement by June 1st. I guess my question is, the $12 million originally budgeted for the bond, what was the, again, you may have said this, what was the difference between the 9 million that they're saying the project would cost and the 12 million that they were going to borrow in the beginning?
Right, they were, the original idea for the, for the $12 million bond was, again, the 9 million for the gym, and then that, that 3 million left over would be used for some capital improvement projects around the school, such as building a field house? Is that what they call them, around, for like the football field? Building some actual, right now, they have Jiffy Johns for the football field, they want to build a, actual restrooms for that, so those, those types of ideas. Obviously, if they would build or purchase this land, those capital improvement projects would be postponed until a later time.
Okay. So I have the ballots for this. I don't know what other information you need, or if you feel comfortable not voting in a public meeting.
Well, I have some questions. So, okay, so they need our, our approval and the approval of all the other school boards because we are connected, we have students that attend there, correct?
Correct.
What is our financial responsibility, then, if they go over budget, or, you know, what, what is our responsibility?
The short answer to that? The attorney answer to that is, I don't know.
It depends.
It depends, yeah, it depends. I don't know. I know, like I said, they did, there was a small amount of discussion on that, and saying that if it goes over, like I said, the school's only really interested in that 30 acres that's adjacent to the property. thirty acres that's adjacent to the property. The, the other thirty acres, they really don't want, but it was an all-or-nothing purchase.
So the elderly couple won't allow them just to do thirty acres?
No, no, because they're trying, they're trying to cash out and get rid of everything. So the idea would be to recoup some of that cost, and that may even be down the line to, even if it would stay within that twelve million, is to sell that and recoup some of that cost as well.
It's my understanding that there are also talking points that indicated that if there are shortfalls, that they may be made up by retain, the York County School of Technology retaining year-end excess revenue that is usually returned to the districts?
Yeah.
So that would definitely have an impact to our district.
I don't feel comfortable voting tonight because I need answers to those questions. So whether we do it Thursday or some other way, I don't know, but I'm not ready tonight.
Yeah, like I said, currently, they are asking us to have individual ballots by the board members and return them to me, and I send them off to the authority.
That's my understanding.
What, were they mailed to you?
I have them in email form.
Because I know the email I read said that they will be mailed individually, and it's up to you to vote then and the guests return them.
Why, just out of curiosity, why would they do that that way? What would be the significance of doing it that way as opposed to having a public vote at individual board meetings?
My understanding, as far as the individual ballot, paper ballot, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know why we can't just do a voice voter, hand voter, whatever, on that.
Might be the way Roarbotec was set up.
Yeah, possibility, you know, I'm still learning the whole, that whole...
The email, the email that we received from the solicitor of York County School of Technology says the following. They explain what Chuck has explained to us, but they say, please, please print the personalized board member letter and an individual board member resolution or ballot to distribute for each of your board members. They must complete the ballots and return them to you. Once you receive all of the mail ballots back from your board members, please send them to my address. And she needs them back no later than May fifteenth.
And like I said, I, from a, you know, from one standpoint, I think it's a good idea to get this land, because like I said, that's, it's the only land left around, around the school. But as we're going into more of this, and deeper into it, I, I'm having, I myself, being on that board, is having more and more questions. So, you know, I'd love to be more assertive on this and more, but I just, I can't give you full one hundred percent confidence on this.
What's the current gym, too little, and they want to build such a, I thought they need more classroom space because of November...
Well, and that's, on their last, in two thousand and three, is when they did their last expansion, and it was classroom expansion. They have a small gym that's undersized. And I guess my understanding is, and again, I wasn't totally understood in all this, but they don't have enough room for all their sports teams to practice. So they actually have a, an old cafeteria, their old cafeteria is windows, floor to ceiling, and that's where their wrestling team practices currently. And they've had students already fly into those windows, and their concern is, from a safety standpoint, of some kid falling through that play class window, which obviously is a concern, but that's their idea.
Well, I know I don't know how accurate was your grandson said they wanted to build a three-story gym, so they have enough room. I'm just saying what he heard, and I know he's in Diesel, and that shop in there is too small for Diesel because you can walk through it and you can't do nothing.
Right. And that was part of the, what they were looking at as far as, as the capital improvements initially was to expand that. And now they're talking about maybe even actually, if that land would be purchased, to actually moving that facility out to that area or something. So that, again, they've got a lot of ideas, but obviously nothing concrete. As far as the gym design, it's a sunken gym design, so you actually walk in, kind of like what Hershey Park, like the Giant Center is, you actually walk down in, and then you have, so you walk up for the stands, and then you actually have like the mezzanine around the entire, the entire gymnasium.
Could we get some answers to some of these questions and concerns by Thursday, and then deal with this ballot on Thursday?
I'll have the ballots printed out to hand to you on Thursday, if that's the method that you so choose on Thursday to vote.
I will tell you, the chairman, I guess you call him, of the JOC and the administration have offered to come out if we would like them to come out and present or to be here for questions, if that's something that you would desire.
Does anybody feel the need for that?
I feel like as long as we have our questions answered, I don't need anybody showing up.
Okay. More conversation on Thursday.
That's all I had then.
Okay, LIU Special Education. Anything in that category, Mr. DeSho, Mrs. Kroom?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Legislative. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the ESA resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? The motion carries. Anything else in that category, Mr. Rollhauser? Anything else in that category you'd like to report on?
Oh, no, that took care of the voucher thing, and the only other comment I'll make while I'm talking is that for, in an LIU building, we started, they were planning to start in April to make, put the new security system in.
Okay, thank you. PSBA, anything, Mrs. Brinton?
Nothing new. Yesterday was the PSBA day at the Capitol. There were a lot of PSBA people around. That's about it.
Dover Industrial Development Authority, Mrs. Herman is not with us tonight. Mr. Benton, did you have anything you want to add on that?
Actually, I haven't been there the last three due to medical reasons.
Okay. Superintendent's report, Mrs. Kroom?
Okay, just a few things. Jason Darden's memorial service is scheduled for Friday between four and seven o'clock, and from what I understand, it's going to not be a presentation, it's just going to be a come and visit. The administration will be present at this. That is going to be at the Church of the Open Door, four o'clock to seven o'clock. Also on Friday, I don't know if you've been following this at all, but there is a second walkout scheduled nationally on Friday. It's not gotten the traction the last one did. Jared, you still haven't heard from any kids. And we've kind of been busy with other things in the last week, so just for your information, any students who do choose to walk out will be disciplined as if they're walking out of school. We had a meeting with a Mr. Brad Jacobs, who is a nineteen sixty-two graduate of Dover Area School District, who is very interested in helping us develop a veterans' memorial when we build the new high school. So we met with him, and we are going to move forward with a committee. We're going to ask some teachers who currently serve to be part of this, and was wondering if there's a board member who would like to be part of this as well. We look, looking at the plans, Roarbotec, Crabtree's going to help us, and we think it'll be at the entrance of the heist, the new high school. Is anyone interested, like to participate with us? I will. Okay, great. And then I'd also like to echo what Sophie shared, that Brian, Brian Bond's Mars Rover team and the Spring Grove team won the two thousand eighteen Battle of the Rockets Mars Rover event. They won first place out of fourteen teams. Now, this is how significant this is. Last year, there was no event. The last seven years prior to that, the Virginia Tech, Cincinnati University, University of Alabama, University of Texas Arlington, they were all colleges that won. So that is really quite a feat and very exciting. On Friday, I'm going to send you the information he sent us, there are pictures and some other pieces there. And finally, I'd like to thank Dover Elementary School for their presentation tonight, they're adorable. They do a lot of great things at Dover Elementary, and the artwork is theirs as well, correct? Yes. So we'd like to thank them.
Can we have the Rocket folks here next month?
We can do that.
Under presentations?
We can do that.
Okay. Okay. Next is our miscellaneous category for any other comments or observations from our board members. Does, does anybody have anything tonight?
I just want to say that the, the high school band concert was the next one, once again, this past Saturday night.
I would agree. And I think Steve's grandson would agree, too.
Pretty well.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our last public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If anybody would like to comment, please come to the microphones. Future meetings. Our next board committee meeting will be this Thursday at six P.M. Board planning meetings will be April nineteenth at seven P.M. here, and then our next board action meeting will be May fifteenth at seven P.M. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order tonight, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.